I've got sixty fifty-nine and change, Brian. So if you want to start with the remote announcement, I think we should be good to go. Then you can call the meeting to order.
Hey, everybody. Uh, we're this is the Bridgewater Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting of the Bridgewater Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, uh, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded and within forty-eight hours, uh, we will post a link of the recording on the town's website and or the town's social media page. The following members of the zoning board of appeal are participating remotely. Myself, Chair Brian Heath, Anna Klimas, Vice Chair, Dan Greenberg, member. During this meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as a roll call vote. Following Bridgewater Town staff will also participate remotely. Robert Ruly, Director of Community and Economic Development, Steve Solari, Building Inspector. At this time, everybody's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted throughout the whole meeting. And as it appears on the agenda, the project present, project representatives mics will be unmuted. The project is a public hearing. It allows for public comment. We'll ask you to use the chat feature to ask your questions by listing the name, your name and address and your question. Chair will recognize all questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu and you will be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to use the raise your hand feature. So we will call the meeting to order. We have one item on the agenda. It's a public hearing for Zero Pine Street. Excuse me. Looking for a special permit variance in regards to a retreat lot under section eight point two and eight point four of the zoning board of appeals. We have the applicant representative Bud Morris with us?
Yes.
Okay. Bud, why don't you walk us through what it is you're looking to do here?
Okay, I'd I'd ask if, I think, is Bob the host?
He is hosting.
Could could I?
You want to share your screen?
Yes.
Okay, hang on. Okay, Bud, you should be good.
That work? Is that working for you guys?
Yep.
Okay. Obviously, we've got a board of appeals variants request Pine Street. Normally, I don't say anything about the applicant, but I did want to take a little time because this project and property is special to me. I'm the president of Pine and Spruce Realty Corp. Lee Williams is the treasurer. We purchased this in ninety-five, twenty-nine years ago as part of a larger parcel. And we developed other things in the area Fairway Drive, Country Club Drive and other spots, but more importantly, we became part of the community in the neighborhood. I live on a state lot that you, well, the board had granted me, uh, with frontage on Pine Street. My son lives next door to me. Lee Williams lives on White Pines Road. His son lives next door to him. My two sisters all live on Pine and Spruce Realty land. Over the course of the years, we've tried to work with the town and the community. Any of you familiar with the town golf driving range, the land behind it? We donated for no cost to the to the town so the long hitters or the slices on the private range could hit their balls. We provided trails to the Boy Scouts to use for handy kids through our land. We have thirty-five acres on the far side of Pine Street. We provided drainage to Twin Diamonds Road to make sure the neighbors would stay dry and it didn't puddle out front. And now we're facing, Lee is eighty-five years old. His wife is an assisted living and he'd like me to close Pine and Spruce by getting completing the last two parcels we own. One is the one we're going to talk about tonight. The other one is that thirty-five acres I was talking about on the other side of Pine Street. It abuts the twelfth hole. If for some reason you hit your ball over the green, you'll have it land on our land down there. We are looking at donating that to either the town, Easter Seals, who's the new handy kids, or the Wildlands Trust. The property in question, so you know where we are. This is Burger King on Route twenty-four, twenty-four North. Recently, the board approved a state law over here for us, which is now built. You can see easily, we had forty feet coming in and the ability to put three or four houses out here, but we opted just to have one estate lot and be done. As I said, I live in the area. My good friends, Woodingtons, they all live in the area. Just trying to finish off what we have. We have this parcel right here, which is the subject property. This was three point five acres. This is four point six acres. On our proposal we submitted to you, there'd be one house out here, it'd be three hundred and fifty feet from that neighbor or two hundred and seventy-five feet from that neighbor. Tell you a brief history of it because it does play into having a hardship that goes with the property. The red areas were areas in this white area that we're talking about are areas of the Ellis family. When Route twenty-four was built, the state came in and took all of this yellow area for a rest area in for twenty-four from the Ellis family. Pine and Spruce bought, uh, the stuff that's in the red and out here as part of some other things that we've done there. Over the course of the years, we've tried to utilize the property the best we can. As I said, we just talked about that one. This is Ivy Circle down the street. We bought an access here to get out to Pine Street. We developed these. Along with the same thing, all long driveways out to houses. My own house sits on this piece just off of the screen. You can see that on my own house, there's a little pinch point right here that have a ten-foot wide driveway with stone walls on each side, kind of like a little gate going into my property. Twenty-five years ago is how long ago that we built this. So this is our last remaining piece out there. So what we decided we'd try to do is create an estate lot. And I just highlighted it in yellow because it has interior stone walls. So it kind of makes it a little confusing sometime when you're looking at a plan. This is a vacant piece of land owned by the town of Bridgewater, and that's a vacant piece of land as well. So when you're looking at the property out there, it looks even bigger. It looks like six acres of land. We basically had two choices. We could come in with a retreat lot or we could look at trying to do some kind of subdivision. This is not an engineered plan. It's just me putting dots on a plan. But we do have a roadway easement right here that comes out that we could put a cul-de-sac and put three or four houses out here. We're not looking to do that. Uh, we bought this roadway easement fourteen, fourteen, ten years ago. As I said, we haven't been in a hurry to do anything. We live in the area. We try to keep it as wooded and maintained as possible. But now, you know, with Lee, we are looking at finishing off Pine and Spruce. In order to go for a, um, a foreign estate law, we would need a variance from you. You're required to have thirty feet of frontage. We have nineteen point six seven feet of frontage. I will tell you, as you get back off the street, it very quickly diverges, goes to thirty feet there. If you take one step off the street, you're back to twenty feet. You take about ten steps off the street, you're out to thirty feet. I did have this little diagram here at forty feet, you're thirty-one point seven. The forty feet's a magic number because that's where the required setback is in the area. So we do have thirty-one point seven at the required setback. As part of our proposal, we're talking about putting a no-cut buffer here against the neighbor here, just to try to keep a little more privacy and behind them because that's where the Burger King area is out there. I'd like to keep all of the trees up there, both for the new house and for the people that are there as well. I did want to talk about the second variance that we're asking for. The second variance we're asking for is for variance on minimum lot width. As part of preparing my presentation, I asked the engineer to calculate the forty-foot setback, what the, what the square, I'm sorry, the distance was there. And he came up with thirty-one point seven. And he asked me, he said, what are you going for a variance for if it says you have to maintain a minimum lot width of thirty feet? And lot width is defined in your bylaw is width of a lot measured parallel to the lot line at the required yard depth. So here we're thirty-one point seven, and these are all well over a hundred. And the lot width is actually a parallel line to the street back here. That being said, we also need to get a special permit from you. And we'd like to do something that makes sure we keep the board happy, the neighbors happy, and whatever we can do. That was just that detail that I was trying to show you at the setback. I would diverge is very quickly. So what we're really missing is a little sliver right here. That minimum lot width, um, coming here, that's actually lot depth, but and there's nothing in the bylaw. But as I said, we do want to make people happy with what we're doing. Uh, I did want to demonstrate the sixteen foot is adequate to get back here. It's a pinch point that goes out there. And it was created as a hardship because the state came in and took this piece of land, leaving that as their only connection out to here. Back in the day, date myself a little bit, they used to have what they called one rod and two rod roads. And a rod is sixteen point three three feet, and that's how people would access their properties. Either one or two rod road, beel road across the streets, a two-rod road at thirty-three feet. So that's why they left the sixteen and a half, sixteen point five one there because it's a one-rod road. The, as you go around town, you'll find that there are many places that have a gate. This is one that's over on Forest Street. Standard gates in town are twelve to sixteen feet. Doesn't mean once you get on each side of this, here we have a hundred feet and here we have two hundred feet. Once you get through this little pinch point, uh, it's plenty wide there. My own driveway is ten-foot wide with stone walls on each side of it. I've had ambulances and fire trucks and such. The other thing I'll tell you about that is that as you go around town, anyone doing a wetlands crossing, conservation for single-family home only allows a twelve-foot driveway as a crossing. So every single one of them has a pinch point that's smaller than the twelve, sixteen foot. I did go down, met with the fire department to ask if they had any concerns. And one of the things the fire department brought out was that the possibility of parking a truck here while they hooked up a hose because of the distance to a sprinkler down here. So what they said was they would be fine if we were to put sprinklers in the house. So we would definitely be in agreement to putting sprinklers in the house if the board so chooses, but certainly the fire department would require it to get a building permit. I also thought, well, after talking to them, what might be a little bit better? And I asked a few of my friends and one of the things we came up with is Charlie Macy built one over on Summer Street. It was similar to this. And that's putting the house in the front portion instead of back in here. It would still be at this location, hundred and fifty feet from this house and a hundred and fifty feet from this house. And if you look at the distance between all the houses in the neighborhood, they're all a hundred feet or less from each other. So it's a pretty good buffer here, would still provide a buffer zone along here of trees and would keep the driveway along this very edge as we came out here. Oops, let me go back one, sorry. Uh, one of the good things is because we're closer to the street now, we don't have to provide a turnaround. It's close to the streets of the fire department would need that, which would allow us to keep all these trees out here. It's always nice to keep as much of a buffer you can to twenty-four in the, in the highway area. As I said, we could meet all of the front, um, the front line, the sideline and the back line, in the back, I'm sorry, let me go back one. In the back, this right here, I've kept fifty feet. You only have to keep thirty-five feet. You only got to be twenty feet from the sidelines. That's twenty-five and that's fifty again. That's vacant land and vacant land. So I tried to push everything to the left to have the least amount of impact on the neighborhood. This is the one that the Board of Appeals did approve over on Summer Street. It's three twenty-nine Summer Street. And they did a similar thing. They put the house out here and let the people enjoy the four acres out behind them. And that's worked out very well. And that's where Charlie Macy gave me the idea to do that. We would be fine as a condition of any special permit to require us to put the house in the front should the the board find that to be something they'd like. And finally, uh, but ask the board to find that due to the land taking and the topography created by the highway construction and subsequent bylaw enactment, hardship exists, that even though we have reduced frontage, that it does increase to the required frontage at the minimal setback. That estate lots and large lots are common in the area, that the property use is the best use for the property and some keeping with the neighborhood. We would agree to give that tree cutting buffer we talked about, both to the side and to the rear. Also, we would extinguish the roadway easement that goes out to Pine Street. That would help the neighbor in that he would no longer have an easement on his property. It'd also ensure the board that we weren't going to build anything more out there. If you desire to have the home in the rear of the property, we would sprinkle the home, uh, pursuant to the fire department request. Or you could require the home to be built in the forward section in that we meet all sideline and setback requirements. Happy to do that as well. And also any conditions or improvements the board or our neighbors might suggest, we're open to whatever you might find and look forward to answering your questions and hearing public comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Bud. Um, actually, I like, I like what I heard about putting it in the front, not in the back. The my consternation was that little sixteen foot. And you would give up the easement. So to your point, because the one thing when you were talking about this was I was thinking, all right, well, then he's going to come back and say, I'm going to use the easement to.
No, you're certainly welcome to make a condition that we extinguish the easement. It benefits both the neighbor with their property, but also assuring the board that we're done. We're also happy to put a deed restriction on it that no further subdivision would occur. Happy to do that as well.
Um, Anna or Dan, any, uh, questions or any comments regarding proposals? It's better than what I, what I was reading, a lot better.
Yeah.
Interesting, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. I would agree that the putting the house in the front has changed my perspective. I would just inquire, um, you know, you during the course of your presentation, you said you want to make the people happy. Have you talked to the abutters and have you shared these proposals with them? And are any of the abutters here?
Um, I think there are some abutters here. Uh, I have tried to talk to some abutters. I didn't get response from some people. I got some telephone calls from some people. So I'm happy to hear any public comments and anything I can do to improve the project or make it better for the people around them, more than happy to.
Hi, Bud. Do you mind if I, this is Mike Foley.
Yeah, just a minute, Mr. Foley.
Okay.
Yeah, um, Bud, the parcel that is, uh, what is it, parcel nineteen back there? It's kind of landlocked.
Parcel.
Pardon?
Parcel nineteen, yes.
Yeah. You ever approached them?
I have tried to approach them. They are, they do not live on the property or but the property. I have sent them multiple letters and tried to talk to them, uh, and I haven't had any response. Uh, I honestly don't know how to get ahold of them.
I have a question. Um, yeah, is there any reason why you don't want to use the easement itself, the roadway easement to access the property?
Yes. The roadway easement is just that. It's an easement for the purposes of constructing a roadway. If we construct a roadway, uh, we would end up building a road. And as part of building a road, we'd put in three or four houses because you can't justify the cost of a roadway. Bringing the water service down and the fire hydrant and all of that for a, for a three-lot subdivision, about eighty thousand dollars right now alone. Never mind building the street. We'd also have to go ahead. We would have to put in drainage facilities. We'd have to, for three or four houses, cut down a ton of trees and everything else. I'm very cognizant, I try to be cognizant of our neighbors out on Pine Street. I'm friends with so many people in the neighborhood and the area. I don't want to cut down all the trees behind their house between them and Route twenty-four. And I think, uh, putting it in that front area in particular, um, still allows protection because in front of it is a town-owned piece of land, uh, vacant land right there. And behind it, I'd no longer have a turnaround so I could maintain the trees there. The people could live on the lot and then have a, uh, an accessway to four acres that they could use for their own enjoyment. But I'm not something that's being built and something that would maintain the trees and the privacy and the buffer for all of the neighbors around there. I really don't want to go ahead and, you know, you're talking about cutting down a whole lot of trees and opening up a whole lot of area when it can remain private the way that it is. And as I kind of started with this, my business partner in this is Lee Williams. He's eighty-five years old. His wife is an assisted living. It kind of like, you know, wrap this up. The roadway easement, we bought ten years ago. I mean, we've we've been patient at thirty years on, on doing something with the property. And I think this is the easiest way. Uh, it would get one house lot out there. Such a beautiful spot and everything else. My sister's considering selling her house and building a ranch there. Uh, I mean, it's, it's nice and we have a lot of family and friends in the area. Uh, and I, I think that would be a great use for the property and probably maintain the most privacy and the just the best outcome for the neighborhood in general.
Bud, what's the, Bud, what's the history of the town-owned parcel? Was that a tax?
That was a tax-taking and it was a tax-taking many years ago. Oh, it's been out there for, for quite a while, but it's not a, not a buildable piece. It doesn't have the required frontage or square footage.
But if you were to acquire that, would that be something you're interested in doing?
I would be more than happy to, you know, it gives me more room to move around there, but it, I don't think it really changes my plan though, because I'd still want to have the house set out, um, that so that would remain woodlands, whether it's somebody's front yard with a little bit of privacy and some extra trees. But as I said, I sold the house across the street. Uh, the Larry's live over there. Kevin Woodington lives over there. I'm not looking to expose everything out at the street. I'd like to keep what I can for privacy, but I'm more than happy to, you know, if the town is interested in selling that piece, I'm more than happy to buy it.
Would there be an option to, to purchase just a piece of that to kind of square off that property?
I was about to ask, Bud, can you just put that map, the, the survey back up that shows the town parcel?
Yeah. I am too. There you go. As a practical matter, you see how that's all heavily treated and everything else?
I, I guess my question is if you were able to acquire that or a portion of it, then the sixteen or the nineteen feet issue goes away.
The nineteen feet issue does go away. The lot width issue is debatable and whether it goes away as well, but it'd still be back here for an estate lot and what have you. And I don't think is the general outcome is what I was trying to say is that building a house, I'd still want to have a house out here for the reason that I don't want to be up here with the neighbors. I want to have a house back here that provides a lot of privacy to everybody here.
No, I'm, I'm just looking at, you know, getting you past the point that, I mean, the, the road width or the, the frontage issue, if we can eliminate that, I mean, I don't think it makes any, doesn't change where you cite the house. It just makes that argument go away.
Yeah. It does. So you, you know, as I said, we're, uh, I'm open to something like that. It's, it's difficult sometimes to purchase town property and a long procedure.
Going through a process that, you know, we're, I think, trying to look at what we have as town-owned property that we've gotten for various reasons and is it ever going to be anything for us or should we have a tax sale on it? So, um, you know, if that was something you were interested in, then I might through the chair suggest that I will make that inquiry with the town to see if that can happen. And then, you know, s- continue this to another meeting, but that's, that's entirely up to the chair and the board.
Well, to your, your point, Bobby, I mean, it fully gets rid of the, the ten-plus foot variance issue and you can put the lot anywhere. I mean, the, uh, house anywhere on the lot. Bud wants to put it further back or, you know, situate it very close to where he's got it now. You know, it takes all, it takes being in front of us away.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I thought was. And I mean, if he abandons the, the road easement, then that's a win-win for everyone too. So I mean, I'm happy to pursue that if that's the direction that the board would like to go and Mr. Morris is agreeable to that.
I know I would feel a lot more comfortable with that. And again, that gets rid of, you know, any kind of a frontage issue. Again, even if he buys a sliver of it and just kind of squares off that diagonal.
From the town's perspective, I town's not going to sell a sliver.
The sliver is the whole parcel.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's advantageous too. I mean, I don't think that, you know, we're not talking about big dollars here.
And as I said, I'm, I'm happy to do that and I'm open to suggestions or what have you. I'm also trying to resolve this property so we can close down the corporation and be done. My previous experiences and, and again, I, I don't know, but I've bought land from the town of East Bridgewater before. I have dealt with some other towns. The process is very long, can be very long and cumbersome. They would have to go out and evaluate it to say whether to put it out to public.
We just had, I mean, I, and I just, you know, I, we just had a tax sale. I don't know if this parcel was even included in that. All I'm suggesting is I would be, you know, if you were agreeable to this being continued to the next meeting, I think we would have an answer. I mean, I don't think it's as cumbersome a process as it maybe has been in the past. But, yeah, I'm, I'm looking for an alternative that makes it easier for everybody.
I, I, as I said, I'm happy to work with the board and with the town. Maybe we can hear from the neighbors or anything, maybe try to address everything at once. The board might want me to come back with some other things when we come back at that time.
You can stop sharing, Bud. I mean, I know Mr. Foley had some, something he wanted to say too, but again, through the chair, I'll let him.
I mean, I, I, I think it would make the whole lot a lot more desirable for anybody if that, if you had that piece in front of it. Plus, it gets it away from us. And Bob, if you are willing to help shepherd that through and, you know, you'd get rid of the easement. So it's, there's some positives, additional positives as well there, you know? I, I like the idea. But to Bud's comment, let's, because if the town isn't going to do it or they're going to take, you know, too long, then he's going to be back for us.
Yeah, fair dues.
So I'd like to, uh, understand where the neighbors sit on this. So if we have anybody, uh, any more questions from Anna or Dan, or otherwise we'll open it up to, uh, public, uh, question and comments. Good. Mr. Foley, that would be you.
Pardon?
If you could just, your name and address, please?
Yeah. So Mike, just state your name, address and you can go.
Yep, no problem. Thank you. Um, Mike Foley, two sixty-five Pine Street. So literally the lot right next door. Um, Bud, do you mind bringing up that zone plan again, if you don't mind?
Sure.
And I'm, you know, believe me, I, I think we, we had some communication way back, I think via mail, snail mail and, you know, just me trying to understand it because I'm a neighbor, right, right next to the property. And, you know, the biggest thing for me is privacy, right? Privacy, privacy, privacy. I want to be able to go out to my backyard and I, I I, that's why we bought this house because of the privacy, right? The three are surrounded by the woods, right? You can see the house, you know, the, the house on the top part of the map there. Um, that's my, that was our biggest thing. We've been here since twenty-twelve, right? And we love the area, you know, we love the house, we love the street, everything about it. It's just when you start putting a street in, you know, you know, a driveway right next to the house. And I know you mentioned there was a probably like a ten-foot kind of path that you would keep, but how much does trees really cover, right? Is it going to be arbivites that going to, are going to be all along that are going to be providing that, um, privacy? And then who's going to maintain that down the road, right? If you sell the house and people on the driveway and they're like, screw the arbivite and it goes away, what happens, right? Then I lose that privacy or whatever it may be, right? Right, then I lose that privacy or whatever it may be, right? And I think that's my biggest concern. And just as you guys were talking about the vacant parcel, the town parcel. Is it possible then to shift the road from the angle to straighten it out? In down the middle of the parcel and give us more. You know, room, we'll say, between. Our property and the beginning of that driveway. And what you were planning on doing, you know, as long as, I I think the biggest thing for for us. Is the privacy piece of it, and obviously, there's other things that. You know, we think about too, is like the wildlife, right? Every time somebody knock knocks down trees, wildlife has to go somewhere. And from, you know, the building, you know, I think Bud, you had down the street at like one eighty-three. I think you bought a bunch of a couple older houses over there and you put up three. Three houses over there, I believe.
Yes.
You know, the influx of wildlife into other people's yards, into people's, into the town, right? A- a- as well, right? You see all those things happen and people are like, why is there foxes here, deer here, this, that, and the other? It's all kind of adds up, right? As we keep building and knocking things down, wildlife, it. Things have to go somewhere, right? That's another concern, not a huge concern, but it is a concern.
Maybe I address a couple of those things with you. One is I'm more than happy to have this lot line over here where I'm pointing.
Yep.
Staked out. And bring the bring the driveway right along the lot line as close as I can get. Um, to leave as much of a tree buffer. It's hard, but we're using the natural trees that are there in a no-cutting zone. Um, this is a heavily treated area, one of the things that throws you a little bit is. The overlay when GIS puts this on the maps, it slides it all, see how it goes through.
Yeah, moves it over a little.
Your lot line's actually over here, uh, you can see where your shed is and what have you. So this whole area that would leave would all be a tree buffer in here. And if we got this, you're talking about seeing somebody's driveway. Through a tree buffer as they go out to a house and then hang out in their backyard. And as far as the wildlife by coming out here. You're leaving over four acres of of land for the wildlife to, there actually are deer that that. Circle all the way down to my yard.
Back there and it's great, right, to just. When you have that much land to be able to hike through and get not really be around anything, right? It's just, wow, alright, that's a nice big parcel of land to, you know. Down the street or anything, I get it, right? I mean, I I just, it's really. If this was gonna go through, I I would just love to be able to work with you to figure out what's the best way, because I know. Right next to mine. On my, you know, thing, there was a couple of trees that unfortunately were falling over into my property and I just had cut down. Because they kept falling onto the pool area. Um, back, so I had some things cut down, is there, is there anything you can do or we can work together to build up? That buffer, that if there's a lack of buffer. Is there something we can do?
Yeah, one of the things that I've done in the past and I'm happy to do here again is, uh. You know, obviously out here at the street's not gonna make much, but as we come here by your pool area or what have you. Uh, one of the things I've found that's very good is white pine trees. You use white pine trees and then you snip off, you lop off the tops of them. They grow very full, they're a year-round tree. And they grow into each other, the best example I can tell anybody to do is drive down Elm Street. Uh, you know, the condos that were built on the right side headed to West Bridgewater? They used white pines in the front of that. And you'll see all the screening and privacy that they ended up having, and the white pines stay green all year round and they stay full. One of my favorite plants is a house over in Eastern that I sold that. They planted them all along their lot line and then they lopped them at about eight feet. And those things just, they look like a fence, you know, they really do a good job of of privacy and a buffer. And it's not just the summertime when you're using your pool, but. Later on, if you have the white pine trees over there, it really does a good job and I'd be happy to. You know, figure out, we'll sit with you and come up with an area. That we can throw some white pine trees along, they're still maintaining what's there. But throw some white pine trees on the side. And and I I tell people and I know it sounds hollow or whatever, but. The people gonna be living in this house don't want to see you as much as you don't want to see them.
Agreed. And look in their front window. See us out there either. I mean, if they don't have a pool, maybe they'd be like, hey, come over, but. I think we all want our. Piece of privacy to a point, right? We're we're all busy folks, we all want to be able to just. Have that. Piece of our. Land to, you know. Not, you know, like, obviously, when you live in the city and stuff like that, that's crazy, right? You can reach out one window, you're in the next person's window grabbing something off the stove, right? You know, that's why I moved the Bridgewater, right? Because it was away from the city, it was, you get that privacy, but you still get. Some amenities and things like that, and the the consistency of, you know, the travel, right? You get four ninety-five, twenty-four, all the good stuff about it. It's just, you know, I think what I would love to see is. Maybe just a different plan of how you would adjust it and what you would do to help at least. You know, for myselfishly, my private, our privacy for our house, just to kind of understand what you'll do, what would adjust if you did, if the town. I guess. Were you were able to buy some of that other parcel to make the width? And obviously, you know, what that would look like, I think, of of revamped. Um, model of this or an adjusted model of that would would help me. Knowing where it's gonna be, what we'll do to, you know, what you'll do to help. With the privacy and 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 stuff like that and just other things, you know, is runoff, right? Water runoff from the road, you know, from the driveway, is that gonna be an issue, right? Water runoff or anything's like, anything like that, and I'm sure the power is gonna be buried underground to the house, not poles. Because that's another thing, I wouldn't want telephone poles running down, I'm seeing telephone poles. Down the driveway.
Mister Chair.
I mean, I think this is getting beyond.
I'm just, oh, that's fine, I had to just kind of and just understand before, so you, and you guys understand too. You know, when you have telephone poles running down a driveway through somebody's backyard. That's another thing.
Mister Foley, I I think I hear you, we hit, we all hear you, you know, your concerns about the property and what it's gonna, what the change is gonna look like. Um, I think that goes beyond the scope of what we're tasked for here, uh, you know, with the zoning board and, but I appreciate your concerns, so.
So, are there any other? Uh, butters, um, because, you know, one of the things is, as we talked about Bud and if you were amenable as well as. Working with Bob to. See about that additional parcel and then, as we said, you don't even need to see us, you can put the drive, you know. I would assume if you got that parcel, you're not gonna go put it on Mr. Foley's lot right the way it is, you'd move it towards the middle.
I still, even it, even with that parcel, it'd still have to come to you for a special permit. I lost, so I'll still be back, yeah.
Yeah, no, but it it would be easier.
Oh, yes, yep.
There may be some other butters that. Would like to comment on this, so I'm seeing an Amy in a mic. Um, I would just say that if you do want to speak to it, you just, uh, your full name and address, please. I don't want to call you Amy, but that's what it says on the screen.
Uh, sorry, my name is Jason Lothrup, I live at two eighty-nine Pine Street on the other side of the property. And I do agree with Mike Foley about, um, you know, wanting the privacy and not wanting a road back there and stuff, but, um. I guess if you had. The correct amount of variance. The frontage, then there's nothing I could do about it, you know, I wouldn't want somebody telling me I couldn't do something if, uh. If I wanted to build something, but, um. I think you're just gonna, I'd say you're gonna have to get that extra footage somehow. Either make somebody an offer or get it off the town or something. That's how I stand, like, you know. I, uh. Yeah, like if you had it, nothing we can do about it, do whatever you want, but if you don't have it, uh, you don't have it. That's it.
Thank you. There is a mic, Mike, I don't know if you. Want to speak or not, um. Apparently not, um. So I I, that is all. For people from the public, Mister Chairman. Okay, thanks. I think, Bud, if you're amenable, what what I'd like to see is, as we said. I work with Bob. You know, uh, see if we, if there's a a chance to do a. A non-drawn-out long sale of that parcel out front. And and as part of it would be, you know, as we said, you know, give up the easement. Therefore, you wouldn't need the, you wouldn't need the thirty-foot variance, you need the different variance, but, um. It would allow you to move that driveway over and situate the house further back as what, you know. Is back as, uh, as far back as you wanted it, maybe better situated as well.
Okay, and if I can leave with with just one last little comment. Uh, I respect both of the neighbors here and here. Uh, and their comments there, when we reconvene for a hearing. I will push the driveway as close over to here, I'll show some kind of planting area. I'll put some actual dimensions on the house instead of my little sketch. Uh, and probably the final thing that I'd point out to people though is that. If I ended up having to put in a road or do something. I believe Amy, sorry to call you Amy, uh, is right here, you're talking about a roadway right next to you and losing the trees. And the house that would go over here, and again, this wouldn't be exact, that would not go over here, but anyway. The house over here is gonna be in the same general vicinity, so. I'd like to do what's the best thing that I can do there and I'm happy to, um. Mike, I did send you a plan a while ago. But I'm happy to, after I have the plan drafted, uh, drop it by, I'm happy to meet with you and talk about it, I'm. You know, as I said, I live in the neighborhood, my wife's the crazy lady with the horses that goes by, or the donkey. And I see you parking by.
I've I've seen that, I've seen it.
Mister Chair, the next meeting would be April tenth?
April tenth, okay. April tenth. Sorry, I keep hogging the screen there.
Mister Morris, i- if you wanted to make a request to have this continued to. The April tenth meeting, that will give me time to ascertain from the town. What the viability of acquiring that parcel is and how long that would take. And once we know that, then you can refine your plan and have whatever conversations you think you need to have with the butters. Um, we'll put it on the agenda for April tenth, if we're not ready to go, we can continue it, but I think. With all due respect to the chair, that's the best way to proceed at this point. Yeah, I mean, the other thing I just want to point out is. And Bud kind of mentioned it, but. You know, the the thought process too is it. He has a road easement, he could put the road in, but in order to do it, he's gonna have to put in a lot more houses. And he's gonna cut down, as he said, a lot more trees, twenty-four is right there. That opens up that area to a lot more noise. So, looking at it, if we can get, if we can somehow get this. Uh, use of the land. Without having to do that, I think from a neighborhood, my opinion, from a neighborhood perspective, that's a better result.
Thank you, and do you need something in writing for a request or is a request? At this meeting to continue to the tenth?
One of the people will make a motion to. To, we'll we'll just continue this meeting until the tenth.
Okay.
So if Dan or or Anna would. Make a motion to continual to this until April tenth.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing on zero Pine Street, uh, special permit variance until April tenth.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Alright, so we'll we'll continue this bud, and if you could work with, uh, Bob. Do some inquiries into the town, that'd be great.
Fantastic, I thank you all for your time and, uh, and I'm glad to see, I'm happy to work with you and anything we can do.
But thank you for the thorough explanation too, thank you.
Thanks.
You have a great night, thank you. Being my first Zoom meeting, do we all just kind of disappeared or do I hit a button?
You hit exit.
Hit exit, okay, you guys have a great night, thank you.
Thank you. You don't have anything else, do we, Bob?
No, no, there's no minutes and, uh, no other discussion, as I said. Um, perhaps we can. Roll the, uh, fire station into that April tenth meeting too, so we won't have to have especially, not to get with Nicole on terms of the advertising. Michael's supposed to get me the butters list today, I haven't seen it, but, um. I mean, and and we just had a tax sale, so there is a chance that this parcel might have been part of that, I don't know, but. I mean, I just think that's a better solution.
Um, the, wh- what is, what is the variance or that they're gonna be requesting for the? I'm sorry.
On height, so the the tower.
Just the height. Oh, alright. That's the, that's the parcel right. Right behind the, um, national grid thing there, right?
That's correct, yeah, by Ria's, uh, tree farm. Uh, this is a similar situation that came before you with the Mitchell School as well.
Yeah. Alright, how you doing, Steve?
I'm doing good, very good, thank you.
Happy to hear.
Busy but happy.
Um, with that.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion? Third? Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, take care.